Good morning, community. Matt Willis, Public Health Officer. Thanks for this opportunity to provide an update on our COVID-19 pandemic response. I'll start with some of the the numbers and then get into some of the key priorities and strategies for the next couple of weeks. Thank you, Alvaro. Next slide, please. This is our epidemic curve. Shows clearly that we are in a period of resolving the the fourth wave that began in in July. Our case rates right now are about eighteen new cases per day, which corresponds to case rates from about mid-July. So it's about two months since we've seen case rates this low. Next slide, please. And this highlights that the people who are unvaccinated still are the primary drivers of case rates in Marin County. Our case rates among vaccinated individuals are close to four per hundred thousand. And it's about four times that for people who are unvaccinated. Next slide, please. There are fourteen people in the hospital in Marin County. Five of them are in the ICU with COVID-19. Next slide, please. This is the the distribution of variants in Marin by week and shows that we are really fully in Delta variant. All of the variants detected in Marin County through all of our sequencing over the past now six weeks have been the the Delta variant. Some of the concerns that have come up regarding some of the other, the R1, the Mew variant have not manifested in Marin. We're not seeing that, and it's likely because the Delta variant is characterized by increased infectivity. And that's such an effective strategy from a from a fitness standpoint for a virus. And that's to our advantage in some ways because it's preventing in some ways some of those other 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 variants that are characterized by being able to escape the immune system from actually establishing a foothold. So we have not seen any increases in some of those more concerning variants you may be hearing about globally in Marin. Next slide, please. These are our vaccination rates as a as a county. We are now over ninety-seven percent of our eligible residents vaccinated with at least one dose. We are remain the highest highest vaccination rates in the state. Next slide, please. And this breaks down our vaccination rates by age and ethnicity. As you know, we've been taking an approach to make sure that no group is left behind as we move forward with our vaccination campaign. What we see is that importantly, ninety-eight percent of our residents age sixty-five plus have been vaccinated. And and if we look at race ethnicity, we are actually approaching vaccination rates among our African-American population that mirror our vaccination rates in our white population with the difference of thirteen percent versus fourteen percent in those two groups respectively being unvaccinated. Next slide, please. So what does those high vaccination rates mean for us in Marin? There's been some some attention to this recently in the local media that has, you know, described Marin vaccination rates as us as corresponding to both the highest vaccination rates and the lowest case counts. We want to be really clear on the correlation between those things. So this is our case rate per hundred thousand residents compared to other other California and the United States since June, really since when that Delta surge continues. You can see our case rates are about half they were, half of the California rates and about third of what of what the the rest of the nation is experiencing just in terms of cases. Next slide, please. And most importantly, if we're really trying to keep our eye on the prize here in terms of what we are fundamentally trying to prevent in all of our strategies to protect our community, it's it's severe illness, hospitalization and death. And what this slide here shows is that our death rates are significantly lower than than other communities, the state of California or the United States that have lower vaccination rates. And that's the primary benefit for us as a community of high vaccination rates is in that is conferring that protection against the most severe outcomes for COVID-19. Next slide, please. It also means for us importantly, if we step back, having high vaccination rates has minimized the impact of the Delta surge for us. We are among the first counties to start to sort of emerge out of that surge and see declining case rates. Our schools remain open full-time, all students full-time classroom-based learning. Very few occasions where we're having to quarantine entire classrooms or closed classrooms or snow and those schools have closed. Our economy is largely open. We're having limited cases in long-term care facilities, thinking back to January when we had at one point, I think twenty-eight facilities that were having some form of outbreaks all at once. Now it's it's one or two at any given time and the and the cases are limited in those settings and the outbreaks resolve much more quickly. We're having no hospital COVID-19 surge. And our mortality rates, as I indicated, are significantly diminished. So what is taking that all together is taking a step closer to restoring normalcy in those things that we value most. But we're not quite there. Next slide, please. So I want to talk about COVID-19 booster eligibility, then I'll talk about pediatric vaccines and then when our and our and our testing plan for the schools. First with COVID-19 booster eligibility. So CDC, as you're aware, made their announcement on Friday that after an admittedly confusing back and forth between the FDA and the CDC over the over the previous few days, it has boiled down to this. And we in Marin County agree with these recommendations that there are groups where people are recommended to receive booster dose. And then there are groups where people may, if they like, are eligible and can consider getting a booster dose in the context of their own, you know, their their own wish or in conversation with their health care provider. So those groups that are recommended to receive a booster dose are people age sixty-five or older. People who are residents of long-term care facilities or people who have an underlying medical condition who are age fifty to sixty-four. And that's because those individuals, if infected, having been vaccinated, we know that there's evidence of waiting immunity. Everyone has been vaccinated at least six months ago. More evidence of waiting immunity in those groups and more evidence that if they become infected, they have more risk for severe outcomes. And so that's why that's recommended. And that's our that's our recommendation from as well. The other groups will may consider getting a booster if you receive the Pfizer vaccine more than at least six months ago are people with underlying medical conditions who are younger, age eighteen to forty-nine, and people who are at risk of infection due to a job who are of of any age. And next slide, please. These are the this was, I think, yesterday, the CDC clarified what we mean by occupational risk. And this is the list of those occupations that CDC defines as being now eligible for boosters based on increased risk of exposure. First responders, education staff, food and agricultural workers, manufacturing, congregant care staff and corrections workers, social service workers, public transit workers and grocery stores. So if you think back to January, when we are first doing the rollout, this is essentially that list where we are prioritizing for the first set of vaccines. So many people in these groups are actually now eligible by virtue of time because they were vaccinated vaccinated more than six months ago. Next slide, please. So getting our booster shot in Marin, what is how do we make sense of this for us? Just to reiterate, groups who are recommended to receive the booster dose are a higher priority for us because they are at risk for more serious outcomes if infected, which is different than the logic for groups who may consider a booster dose because occupational risk is based on exposure, but not necessarily worse outcomes. People who are young and healthy and have and are fully vaccinated are well protected and there's clear evidence that the the immunity is lasting for those. So that's a lower lower priority. And then the younger younger residents with chronic conditions who are fully vaccinated are also better protected. Very limited evidence that people who are otherwise, you know, a diabetic who's thirty was vaccinated six months ago is actually at higher risk of infection or severe outcomes if they become infected. So that's why the CDC categories them as people who may consider getting vaccines. Where to get vaccines in Marin? Thirty-one pharmacies across the county are offering daily appointments. Our pharmacy community has really stepped forward to be a primary provider of vaccines for us. Everyone in Marin or almost most people in Marin, at least in the the one-on-one corridor, live within a few miles of a pharmacy. And and healthcare providers across the county are also providing vaccines. And then we have a public health is working safely to offer enhanced access for older residents at the North Gate, at a North Gate pod. Next slide, please. And this is that this is that pod. So we are, we've opened, starting tomorrow, a vaccination clinic at North Gate in 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 collaboration with with Safeway. We're reserving that for residents age seventy-five or older because we know they are at higher risk for severe outcomes if they become infected. We have about eleven thousand residents age seventy-five or older. And we're encouraging anyone in that age group to sign up for a vaccine. Right now, we're not seeing tremendous demand in that group despite the fact that it's been open for a few days. We really want to get our seventy-five-year-olds and older into that setting. And as soon as we, you know, don't see any significant demand in that group, we'll move to age sixty-five plus. So it begins tomorrow at North Gate Shopping Center. You can go to get vaccinated Marin.org or simply go to to that site at North Gate tomorrow. And the hours are on our website. So they are, they are taking walk-ins. So you, if you are a loved one, are age seventy-five or older, please register for an appointment or simply go to North Gate. Thank you. Next slide, please. So pediatric vaccines, vaccinating our five to eleven-year-olds. Our goal is to vaccinate seventy-five percent of Marin County children age five to eleven by November thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. This is one of the ways we've proposed our vaccine campaign by setting very clear goals and being transparent about them. And whether it's been our goals around race, ethnicity, age groups, when we when we brought our twelve-to-seventeen-year-olds online, we are able to vaccinate at least half within one week. That had been our goal. We have a more modest goal here of seventy-five percent over a month. And that's because we know that in this younger age group, many will seek visits with their pediatricians, will want to have conversations with their healthcare provider and get vaccinated there. But in order to achieve this goal, we're also mounting vaccine clinics that I'll talk more about. The likely regimen is going to be Pfizer, two doses. This is just, you know, news that is coming out from from Pfizer and in a press release that was released today. At likely at a one-third dose, so it's say ten versus thirty micrograms. There's there's actually a wide range of dosages that have proven to be safe and effective. And when we look at adverse outcomes or those rare adverse outcomes that occur, they do not tend to be dose-dependent. So it's it's determined that our five-to-eleven-year-olds would most likely get a a lower dose. The locations will be dedicated pods at schools and in the community, which I'll talk about in a second. Pharmacies will also be offering vaccines for pediatric population, obviously pediatricians and healthcare providers. And again, the timing we're expected is late October for a federal decision. They're meeting, CDC is meeting on October twentieth. And we know this is going to be on the agenda. Now, what we're seeing coming out of Pfizer in terms of all the data and the materials from the studies to feed that meeting, and it's likely based on the cadence we've seen thus far, the permission would follow that. Next slide, please. So this is working with Marin County Office of Education to offer vaccines in school settings. We think the most efficient place and the most logical place and for convenience for vaccinating children is in school. So we have multiple school-based vaccine clinics already scheduled. We'd like to start as early as possible. So we've already started, you know, set scheduling these for the end of October. First doses in the end of October, second doses through later November and December. At those locations, I won't read them off, but they'll be available on the website and we're working very closely with the school communities to communicate about these these options to parents. Next slide, please. So those are some of the mass vaccination sites that are on weekends. We had a lot of success with our Super Saturdays when we brought our our school community online with the twelve seventeen-year-olds, you know, we're able to vaccinate over two thousand in a day. Those are the big pods. These are smaller school day. Those are those are what I just shared as weekend pods. These are, these are pods that will happen in schools on on weekdays during school days across the county. And again, going for the first dose and then coming back three weeks later for the second dose. And we think with this strategy, when we do that, when we when we map out the numbers, we'll achieve that goal of fifteen thousand. We have twenty thousand residents age five to eleven, so seventy-five percent is fifteen thousand. And our goal is to vaccinate fifteen thousand in the in the month of November essentially for the first dose. Next slide, please. This is also, this is an exciting program that I wanted to share with you. We are working with Marin County Office of Education to to obviously keep schools open and keep schools safe. And one of the ways to do that is to make sure that we're not having to quarantine children too many times. One way to do that is to make sure that when someone has symptoms, we get testing as quickly as possible to rule out infection. If we can rule out infection earlier in the course of symptoms, it reduces the number of individuals who may have to quarantine based on being exposed to that person. So we have a home-based testing pilot that we're working. We've distributed almost thirteen thousand Binax kits to parents working from an equity standpoint, making sure that we're getting these kits into those communities that have been hardest hit. So Spanish language video, Spanish language support, distributing them through some of our lower-income schools as well as other schools in Marin to make sure that every every family has a kit at home to use. If the child develops symptoms in the morning, they can do it, do that test, determine whether or not they're infected. Obviously, we don't want them coming to school with symptoms, so they have to wait till the symptoms resolve. But it helps us to know whether or not that person is infected with COVID-19 as early as possible because that determines how we react to the environment that they've been in. So we're we're continuing the this, the the limiting factor on this particular initiative is the supply of rapid antigen tests. We have, we have optimized the supply that we were able to draw down from the state and are ordering more, but they're on back order. As you know, there's a national shortage of rapid antigen tests. As soon as we get more, we'll be able to continue this pilot to reach every family in Marin. Next slide, please. So in summary, our case rates are declining, community transmission is ongoing. The Delta variant is the dominant strain. We have high vaccination rates which are protecting us as individuals and as a community. Boosters are now approved for certain groups and are available across Marin. We are preparing for childhood vaccinations and strong partnership between schools and public health is protecting our school community. Next slide, please. And this is my usual, my usual last slide has that picture from the Rosie the Riveter Museum with my with my son. He happens to be eleven years old and we're really excited that, you know, on his on his twelfth birthday, we're going to bring him in for his for his for his shot or when he can get vaccinated, you know, as soon as they're eligible and the end of October. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. Questions of board members? Supervisor Conley?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and and thank you, Dr. Willis and your staff for the incredible work you're doing. I can't help but note the recent San Francisco Chronicle article which highlighted how much progress we've made as we approach a hundred percent of eligible residents having received at least one dose at this time. So just a few questions. Your chart, as always, was helpful with the bell-shaped curves. And it suggests we are possibly seeing an end to the fourth wave or suddenly on a downward slope. I guess the question is, how durable of a trend is that as we head into the winter months?
Yeah, that's that's a great question. You know, what we've seen from previous surges is that there is a relatively defined pattern. And we are, I think, on our way, on our way down, case rates are improving. What's important to note is the reason that case rates are improving is because of the steps that we are taking. Facial covering has been a critical strategy for us all the way along. And there's actually now some studies that have shown that comparing communities where there's no policies around facial covering, where there are policies on facial covering and the fact that you see much more dramatic reductions in cases associated with with mandatory face covering policies. So I think that's one of the key strategies for us to make sure that we recognize that the things that we're doing are contributing to this diminishment in cases and that for us to continue that path downward because we're not there yet. If you look at the court, the court, we're about half of where we were on the upswing. So we're not to the back to the trough that we were before. And in order to reach that point, we need to continue to do what we're doing because it's been demonstrated to be successful. Our goal is obviously to to come out of this surge, get our kids vaccinated, you know, if we can get our pediatric population vaccinated by the end of December. I think we're going to be in a really good, get get people boosted, we'll be in a really good place coming into twenty twenty-two.
Matt, fully appreciate that. In fact, we we do consistently hear questions about, and and it goes directly to your point. From your perspective, where are things headed in terms of masking mandates and other safety precautions?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm just judging from from my inbox. I know there's there's increased interest in the community about when will this end, you know, when can we start restoring that element of normalcy, which is having our faces uncovered when we're in public settings together, especially if we're vaccinated. We still have twenty percent of about twenty percent of our population cannot be vaccinated because they're 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 not eligible by virtue of age. So the best we're going to be able to do right now are seventy-nine, we look at the whole population, about seventy-nine percent of us total are fully fully vaccinated. So twenty-one percent are not. That's not close to, you know, when we talk about herd immunity or the concept of community immunity, the numbers that are put out now for the Delta variant are around eighty-five percent. We know that that's, you know, that's not like an on-off switch. It's a continuum. But regardless, it is, we're not, we're not there. So I think we're still at risk of transmission. We are seeing, you know, each day at least eighteen to twenty new cases of COVID-19. Our our young, our young residents remain vulnerable. It is a fragile environment, you know, the school environment is a fragile environment. We published a national study of an outbreak that we had in a school where an unvaccinated teacher infected half of the classroom, just in one setting. We haven't seen much of that kind of transmission after that particular event, but that remains a risk. So if we value, you know, schools, children being in school, I think we all need to do our part to continue to take that simple measure to cover our face when we're in public settings, especially because we know that people who are vaccinated are able to actually become infected and infect others. It'd be different if we knew the vaccination was, you know, hundred percent effective at preventing infection or being infectious, but it does not. So that's the reason why we're continuing to recommend or continuing to mandate people cover their face in indoor public settings. Once our transmission rates are lower and we have our children vaccinated, that's the likely trigger for for lifting that mandate.
And focusing on schools and and you covered it in your presentation in terms of some of the strategies. Looking at case rates, what are we seeing in the school populations, especially those schools with children under age twelve?
In terms of our case rates, our case rates in our, and we're, we're doing well. Actually, our our case rates, there was this little notch, if you saw that, you know, we saw the decline in the in the in the surge. There was a notch in the in early September that of an increase. My concern was that that was be related to our youth because they're unvaccinated. In fact, it was unvaccinated adults that really fueled that that increase at that time.
So school populations are staying steady in terms of.
The school population are staying stable. We're not seeing surges in cases of more young people.
Follow-up question. Can families with kids under the age of twelve plan to travel and gather around the winter holiday with their children fully vaccinated? Kind of a long way of asking, when are kids under twelve going to be able to get that vaccine?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the the timing I shared, where our mass vaccinations for pediatric pediatric community is is end of October. You know, think about it, they get their dose and they had the first dose in the end of October, early November. Their second dose is end of November, early December. And then you got, you know, ten, fourteen days to develop full immunity. For families to choose to have their their child vaccinated early in that process, they can look forward to having that child be fully immune by the winter holidays. And that would be, you know, just a really important added layer of of protection.
Right. And finally, what is the status of staff vaccinations at residential care facilities, which has always been an area of concern?
Yeah, so we have over ninety percent staff vaccination rates in our long-term care facilities. You know, that was one of the earliest and most important initiatives for us was to get out to those long-term care facilities and vaccinate staff. And now because of turnover, you know, we're actually sending sending teams out to revaccinate unvaccinated staff if they come on online. Because now boosters are available for long-term care facility residents, as you heard from the CDC recommendation, we will be working with our pharmacy partners and our healthcare partners to to do the same strategy of moving, you know, mobile teams out to long-term care facilities to vaccinate eligible residents. And in that process, while onsite, be able to also vaccinate on any unvaccinated staff or offer boosters to fully vaccinated staff.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Rice?
Yeah, good morning, and my apologies for being a little bit late. Actually, so thank you, Supervisor Conley. That was the question I was going to ask about the situation at the long-term care and congregant care. And if we were going to be, how we were going to address boosters there and also the staff. So it sounds like we've got those those folks covered and they really are at highest risk. So thank you for that. So then I just want to, I just, I guess, want to reemphasize what I think I'm hearing you saying is that the masking continues to be really important because we know it's preventing spread. The vaccinations are super important because we know they prevent, they they can reduce the severity of disease. We can't just stand alone on on the vaccines. Okay, yeah, and then, yeah, and and then I I just coming in, running a late this morning, listening to the news. We're hearing stories now from Alaska and some other states where their hospitals are so impacted. But our hospitals here are able to handle right now what's happening and still allow for elective surgeries and sort of a little bit more operating as normal. Yes.
That's right, yes.
Okay, and that's, and that is due to our community really stepping up and doing the right things by getting vaccinated and wearing a mask and and doing all the right things. So I just want to reemphasize the the efficacy of of how our community is behaving and it it means a lot, not just for their own health, but for the general community health.
Can I just add one thing to that, to your comment regarding our hospitals? It's really important that they actually are not facing surges in COVID-19 right now because they are at they are at the highest capacity they've had in over a year right now in terms of the number of individuals in the hospital. I mean, if you if you talk to our hospitals now, they are feeling significant stress. Thankfully, not COVID-19-related, but because of a year and a half of deferred care. So we have a pent-up demand for healthcare, for surgeries, for, you know, a variety of different people with cardiac disease that has been neglected. And that's actually fueling a different sort of a second surge of non-COVID-related demand for healthcare that we would not be able to offer if we were also simultaneously dealing with surgeries in COVID-19.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Willis. And then one, just one follow-up on the booster situation. So a county public health will continue to be collecting the data or have access to the data on the boosters that are being delivered in terms of just tracking the populations. Do we get that information from the pharmacies, et cetera? So we'll, you'll have a sense of how many of our higher-risk seventy-five-plus have been, have received their booster. And that will be an indicator for us as to whether or not we need to be a little bit more aggressive or proactive in terms of reaching out to the community.
That's right. We, you know, we know that people can get, there's about eleven thousand residents age seventy-five plus in Marin. Many live in long-term care facilities, so they're going to be taken care of there. We estimate that about seventy-five percent will be seeking vaccines, so twenty-five percent may choose to wait a little bit longer. And then others will be getting vaccinated in pharmacies through their healthcare partner. So we are, we are eager to to offer vaccines for those for those that at seventy-five plus at the North Gate Shopping Center starting tomorrow. And again, encourage people to go there and sign up for that appointment. But very quickly, if we're not seeing, you know, we're not seeing demand in that group because they're getting vaccinated elsewhere, we'll we'll increase our eligibility to our other vulnerable residents who are also by virtue of age, age sixty-five plus. We're measuring that daily, measuring this daily.
And we're we're most concerned with just making sure that folks do, do the folks who are at risk do do move forward and get that third, that booster shot, just to make sure that they're able to fight off disease if they're infected. Okay, great. Hey, thank you, Dr. Willis. I'm going to miss seeing you on a regular basis.
Good seeing you. Thank you.
Supervisor Martin Peters?
Thank you. I just had a quick follow-up question for Matt. When you were talking about the rollout of the boosters and that for people over sixty-five, this was based on, you know, health complications or if they were to get a breakthrough case. But what I want to hear a little more about is just the rollout based on occupation exposure. The the list you had on your slide looked like the very same protocol that we followed for the original rollout of boosters based on those professions that have higher exposure to the public. And so it it looked like it was consistent, and I just wanted to ask for confirmation.
Yeah, it is. It is very consistent. Yeah, it is. It is very consistent with that list. And I suspect that's that that was deliberate because it's both consistent with the logic of why those individuals are at risk based on when they were, you know, based on their exposure and their, you know, this was, this was deemed the essential, right, the essential workers early in in the process. It also temporarily associated with when they were vaccinated, those those individuals by by and large are now more than six months after their first, after they've completed their series. So it makes sense timing-wise. But I want to be clear that just because you're in one of those groups does not mean you're at increased risk for a bad outcome if you become infected. And we know that the primary value of the vaccines is in preventing severe illness and death, not in preventing infections. We already know that people who who are vaccinated can be infected, but it's a much milder course of disease. So I see I see an important difference between people who should seek boosters because they're more risk for actually becoming hospitalized or passing if they're reinfected compared to people who may be at more risk of just being exposed.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.